Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make motion we approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any announcements? A public comment, and I think I had one signed up back this.
That's right.
Uh Sheila Dell. You would give us your name? We're glad to hear you call me.
My name is Shirley, well, let me start over again. My name is Sheila Dell. And I am a Mills River native. I grew up here off of Borlack Road, raised my children here on Mills River. My children went to Mills River, I went to Mills River. And I'm running for Henderson County School Board, and I just wanted to let you guys know that. And I will be at, I think the farmer's market is the nineteenth, and then the next one is on the twentieth, is that correct? Not the twentieth, but the, what is the last, the second one from here? Like, we've got the nineteenth, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
There's one this Saturday.
Is that the only one?
No, we have one every Saturday from eight to twelve.
So the following Saturday, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, I will be at that farmer's market answering any questions that anyone might have. And I just wanted to let you guys know, there's almost five hundred and fifty students in Mills River. And that's just at Mills River Elementary. You guys are growing exponentially. I literally just live right across the township line. So I've got a vested interest in Mills River, and I just thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
How many people are running for school board?
There are nine candidates running, two that are wanting to hold on to their seats, and one truly open seat, but three positions to be filled.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Amy Ross?
Hi, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. I live on Schoolhouse Road. And I'm just wanted to speak on behalf of the Parks and Rec Committee. And for the grants that we, that Nicole is going to be speaking on later on in the meeting. They are, they have written a grant and they're asking to pursue this grant. And that will cost the town money, but it's an eighty twenty grant. And so while it will cost the town money, the, it will be far, far less than what it would cost the town without the grant. And I feel like this is a fantastic opportunity for for us if we pursue this grant, because I know people often talk about how to get down, do we, from the parking lot down to this playground? And not want to deal with this hill, and why do we have this hill, and why don't we have steps, or why don't we have a ramp? And Sarah, the, the lady who has come up with the design and how to get from this parking lot down there, has come up with a very, an ADA accessible way of how to get down there, and it will be beneficial to all children and anybody. When you see it, not just, not just wheelchairs, but just all kids in general with any kind of sensory issues, and just children in general. So I think it'll benefit everyone, and it will be beautiful and fantastic, and it won't just be a set of steps. And I hope that y'all genuinely consider this. I think everybody, a lot of parks are looking at just in general, moving forward in any design, doing ADA compliance, just in every step that they do, because there's no reason not to. So we are all on board with this, and a lot of, I think the town would really, really be for this. So I hope y'all consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Prove of this consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sandra. All in favor? On to our regular agenda. Yes, we're getting right into that. Great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening in your packet, you've got an application for North Carolina Accessibility for Parks Grant Program. This is a project that was approved in the capital improvement plan this year. We've got Sarah Burrows with Sage Design, and our Parks Recreation Director, Cole Sweat, will give you the details on that. Cole, take it away.
Sure, thank you. So as you all probably remember, as a part of our capital improvement projects for this fiscal year, we did allocate three hundred thousand dollars for, to get better accessible access to our playground. And with that opportunity, there is this Accessibilities for Parks Grant, which, as Tammy mentioned, is an eighty twenty match that can help cover the cost of that. And our focus for coming up with this project was really more than just making it a ramp. We wanted to make it a, a space that people can play and enjoy and use within the park. So we have been working with Sarah Burrows with Sage Design to help us come up with the design plan for that. So basically, what we would like from you to get, from you all today is to review the plan, review the budget. And then if you all agree that this is something we should move forward on, just go ahead and direct staff to go ahead and submit this application. So I have Sarah Burrows with Sage Design. She's got a short PowerPoint presentation. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions you all have on this project.
Good evening. I have a brief overview of the grant that we're looking at. I think it was mentioned that it's an eighty twenty grant, and the Accessibilities for Parks Grant is administered with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and the Cultural Resources Department through the state. So you all have had a lot of great success with the, with Mills River Park through the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. So this is a subset of that. Its focus is to increase and improve access to park users, children and veterans with disabilities to public park spaces in greenways. The grant is due November first, and once submitted, they notify any municipality in the spring of 2023. So that's a little bit of an overview of the, the timeframe. So for every dollar you put in, they put in five. It's a really phenomenal matching program as far as grants go. As Nicole mentioned, the project started with trying to get people from this town center down to the park a little bit easier. But I did want to step back a little bit, because you guys have done such a phenomenal job with your comprehensive planning and your Park Master Plan for Mills River. So one of the goals was not just to get people from up above and down below, but how can you incorporate some of those things that you identified in those two plans in this project that would also help fulfill the grant? So that's really what we're doing, is tying the work you've already done together with this grant to try and meet all of those objectives. So we took that goal of, of the ramp and the stairs and added some accessibility play components to your existing playground to really integrate that. One of the things that I really like about this location is it's right in the middle of your park, so it's the heart of your park. That's one thing that the grant program looks for. They don't want to have an accessibility component over in the corner. And so it's really exciting that this is really central to your town hall and your library. So we would be adding, adding sensory components, a garden, and a story walk, and the play space to this area and a small picnic area. So just to get your bearings, I don't know if this actually, so at the ramp, I think you guys all know, it's just directly across from here, and you would cut through where the hill is now. And there would be a ramp down and then stairs, and then a hillside slide there and some play components along with a sensory garden there. So it's a really exciting space. And then in addition to that, we're looking at adding a story walk to your trail. One of the objectives in the master plan was to really try and better connect the library up here with the park. And so this would be a way to not only have that connection, but also another accessible component for park users around that main trail. So I think that's a really exciting addition, too. And just to highlight, just to highlight how this would break down, the total project cost would be three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The grant request is two hundred and fifty one thousand. And then your local match would be able to come from some of that CIP allocation that you have already done, along with some power bill funds. The power bill funds are allowed to be used for infrastructure such as roadway, streets, sidewalks, greenway trails, things like that. So this access component along the trail and then going down to the lower area would be able to utilize those funds. So that's also a really exciting thing. The parks folks get happy when, when there's a connection between that funding source and park spaces. So that is a brief overview. We've had an opportunity to hear from people Nicole set up out in the park, and about, we've got about fifty six respondents in support of the grant and the idea of the park project. We've had an opportunity to meet with the Park Advisory Committee, which was also supportive, and the parent circle. And then Nicole is going to meet with the PTO, and everybody so far is very, very excited about the, the idea of submitting for the grant and improving that space and connection.
Questions?
I have a few.
Okay.
They're probably not directed mostly to you, last Daniel and Nicole, do you think? So we will be able to use power bill funds for our part of the match, correct?
Yes, so the, let me explain that a little bit. So the, the project cost was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and the engineering estimate we got for the sidewalk, I don't remember that full cost off the top of my head. But we took the components of it that were just the sidewalk, just the asphalt, just the aggregate, the base, the asphalt, calculated that out. And that was sixty two thousand and change. And so we're showing how, all of it could be funded with power bill. We're showing the CIP allocation really as a strategic move, so the grant score is better, because it's showing we have two funding sources. Really, it's, it's the town's cash in hand, but because what Sarah's point earlier about all the planning that's happened so far, you, you have the master plan that was adopted. And then he had capital improvement plans that were adopted. And that shows the granting agency that this isn't just on a whim that we're doing this, it's, it's been thought out. And so, again, we're showing those two funding sources to be more, more competitive in the grant scoring process.
And the, the three fourteen one ten, is that WGLA, did they do an S cost estimate on that?
Is that? That's a part of it, yeah. So the basis of the sidewalk and the infrastructure pieces in there, and then we got separate cost estimates for the play components.
And how much is it going to cost the town to apply for this grant?
You are already applying for, so whatever you've invested in printing and sending and, and time.
Nicole, do you have a number on that? Okay, that's, and the only other question I have is, there's nothing in here that says, or that addresses the, the root cause of why we're looking for a ramp. And that's people going up and down the bank over here. So is there any way that we can incorporate something in, into, into this that keep people from going up and down the bank? I saw, I saw people going up and down.
As far as on that side.
Yeah, it's the south end here. Where's the stop sign? That's where everybody goes up and down that bank.
So I think our hope is that if we have stairs on the other side, and we have talked, although because of cost is fencing, the answer to that is really fencing.
Well, you know, there's a fence there now, and I'm sure that's why the fence was put there originally, to keep people going up and down the bank. They just go around the end of the fence here. So if we're, if we're going to leave it like that, I still don't see that that's going to alleviate a lot of people going up and down the bank. Especially if you're parking up here on this end, so it's just something to think about, you know, whether it's more fencing, some. Yeah, yeah, we don't have to put that in here. That was just something else I wanted to throw out there.
I will say, too, that in the master plan for the park, one of the, the objectives is to expand that playground at the other end in the future. So I don't know, that's much further down the road, but that could also be something that's incorporated long term with that. But if there's a more short term answer, you might want to look at that or something down there.
Is this particular grant like a lot of others, we pay and we get our money back?
It's a reimbursement, that's right. That's why in the, in the capital improvement plan, we, we budgeted the whole cost, even though our local match is much, much less than that.
Anyone have anything there?
On the way this is set up, I, I did watch the parks meeting, and it was very informative. I enjoyed that, and it told me a lot. But is it set up to where it's going to need shading like we have on our playground now?
Yeah, so we do have a shade structure incorporated into the plans at the top of the hill when it's coming down. And then we've put in some shade trees around, and that landscape is incorporated into the price of the project as well.
Ms. Burrows, I notice this plan encroaches on existing trail. And, and to maintain the integrity of your design, there shouldn't be an effort to connect that existing trail to this amenity or?
There is actually, so the, the trail, the, the lower trail will be connected. It's going to have to be rerouted a little bit. But that will be connected at the lower end.
Okay, I didn't know if that was meant to divorce it from, from this improvement, or whether they were going to be integrated.
But what y'all are looking for us is a motion to approve sending this grant on.
Sarah, is there specific language I need to?
Yes, I don't have it in front of me today.
Someone handled that, or do we need it re-read on, and so, and fill in the detail?
Nicole, that's your recommendation on your staff report, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, so however, somebody wants to either read that or tell me to put that detail in.
Whoever feels comfortable, go ahead, if you're willing to make a motion, and we'll move on.
I'll make a motion that we approve the grant application, including the accessibility of the park concept plan and, and the AFP grant application. Is that good?
Thank you. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? The, all in favor of? Thank you so much. Hey, moving on to the sort of public hearing for the visual sign, when you get the hold of it.
So, Council, this is really a formality in the process of a text amendment. We saw pre-application meeting last month. Mike isn't working with it, Mr. Livingston, Chief Livingston on the application. And so in order to have the conversation in formal public sense, we have to have a public hearing, which is just normal part of the proceedings. So we're recommending that that be set for November the tenth, twenty twenty two.
Anybody have a problem with November tenth?
I've got some things I'd like to discuss. Do I need to wait until after we make a motion, or?
As far as the, as far as this in particular?
Yeah.
I don't know what now would be the time, or at the public hearing. It depends on the type of question, I would say.
If there's a, there's a procedural question, we can certainly get into those tonight. But as far, as far as substance about the text amendment language or anything like that, that's what the public hearing is really for.
Well, what I have to discuss about may save time. In keeping with the Mills River Comprehensive Plan, and the first goal is to protect and enhance the rural and small town character of Mills River. I, I did some homework on this, and looking at the um, North Carolina Secretary of State website, I pulled it up, and we had talked about putting in the text amendment for putting digital signs on government properties. And on the website, it said that Mills River Fire Department is a nonprofit organization. And I had concerns about that, you know, them being able to do that even off this. So I did speak with the town attorney, and I asked her, you know, if, if we do this, is it going to include them? Or is it going to open up the door to let people go around to the BOA and see about getting it? And she abruptly told me that this was illegal and we could not do it, that it was discrimination. That you cannot say that one set of people can have something and another set cannot.
Well, I guess the question at this point is, are we for, are we not? Would that be if we're, are we trying to?
Well, if we approve it for one, we have to approve it for all.
If I can interject, I don't want to get too far down this path, you know, we don't have the applicant here tonight. And again, you know, I, I respect your question, but you know, the, the point of holding, you know, that's a pretty serious discussion to have. The point of holding that to the public hearing is so the citizens are on notice to attend and offer public comment and, and hear specific questions like that. So I would just caution about going down this path too far, especially since the applicant being Chief Livingston is not even present to hear this tonight. That's, that's the point of the public hearing. But that's something we'd be happy to look into, of course, beforehand.
Right, well, I just, one, don't want to do something that's illegal, and two, do something that we don't want.
And I've, I've spoken to the town attorney as well about this and had a slightly different interpretation. So again, that's something we can connect on before the public hearing. But again, I just caution getting too deep into that tonight.
Okay, so are we okay with having that on November tenth? The public hearing?
Yeah.
Everybody on, if somebody would make a motion to set that public hearing for November tenth, then we'll have all parties on notice that we're.
Let's set the, make a motion to set the public hearing for November tenth, six thirty.
Second, thank you, Jeff. All in favor? Got to open for the Parks Trails and Recreation Committee?
So Mayor and Council, back in August, we had a resignation from the Parks Trails and Recreation Advisory Committee. We presented some applications to you in September, and, and the decision was tabled with the direction that we contact Mr. Eugene Edwards, who's currently on the Board of Adjustment, whose original application was to serve on the Parks Committee. So he has been contacted, and he is willing to serve on that board. So what's up with the council, how you want to proceed?
Any discussion on this?
I'll simply say that I support placing Mr. Edwards on the Parks Recreation Committee, if that's his preference. I, I agree with that. He, I think he wanted to do that more than the Board of Adjustment. Yes, I'll make a motion to that effect to appoint Mr. Eugene Edwards to the Parks and Rec Committee Advisory Board.
I'm gonna fulfill that time, two twenty six to twenty three. All right, so I got one, I got a motion from Jeff. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Hey, we had our discussion about the rescue fund.
If, if, if I may, you're appointing him to the Park Committee, creates a vacancy on your Board of Adjustment Board. And so you do, you don't have to do it tonight, but you eventually have to take action. If you would want to move your alternates up, or you want to, us to advertise, to appoint somebody over the alternates, that would be the, the board's discretion.
Do we, do they have a scheduled meeting coming up?
The October, October one is canceled, December is still in the air. No, they, they meet every other, in even months.
Who's the first alternate?
Jeff Moore. And then you, if, if that's your choice, then you move your second alternate, Jim Foster, into the first alternate position.
And that's been the practice of this town to do the succession, just like that, second to first, first to the board seat.
That has, but this is the first time we've had planning board members as our alternates. So this is new, that's why I'm presenting it like this. This is, you, you're, it's up to the board whether you want to follow that policy. It's not a written policy, that practice, or you want to create something new.
I personally would like to go ahead and see them, let's move them up to the, and get a full Board of Adjustments. Jeff and, and Jim both have been at the majority of the meetings, the Board of Adjustment meetings that I've been to. So I think they're very familiar and aware of what's going on, and it'd be nice to have a full board.
Make that a form of a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Looking for a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Does that mean that we need to advertise for a new second alternate?
Yes.
Or is there, is there anybody?
We, we have one application on file. Yes. That, that was what I was going to suggest at this point, let us advertise it for a couple of weeks, and then uh, I think you have the planning board vacancy on your next agenda, and we could bring this to you in December, after we've left it open for a few weeks.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay. Okay, so this evening, we've got a quick update on the American Rescue Plan Funds and Outreach that we've been working on the last few weeks. And I have just a couple of slides to go through, and then we can, we can discuss it a little bit further. So I'll just start with where we are at this point. We issued a press release back in September after your last meeting to all the local media outlets. Let them know what's going on. We launched a survey. It was not launched on September thirtieth, but it was soon thereafter. Tonight, we're having the town council meeting next Thursday at ten and six PM in this room. We're going to have two public input sessions. And those are going to be the same thing. We're just offering two times for the convenience of the public to come and attend. We're asking people to complete the surveys by the end of the month, and if the council so desires, we could have a workshop on November the third. Um, and then tentatively, we have in here to have, uh, decisions from this board on categories and any specific projects that it might want to fund with, with these monies. That we're not under any specific timeframe for this. This is just an effort to kind of keep this moving. Um, so if there are questions along the way, uh, we can certainly, certainly look to, to push things out if we need to. So just in terms of projects, I've listed them under a couple of different categories. The first, excuse me, are the committed funds. Uh, and we're, everyone's aware that we've, we've committed to the farm market, uh, for the next four years. And then, uh, we provided funds to the fire department for pay for their employees. So that's just there as, as a reminder and, and a couple of things that have been funded. Um, what I'm recommending moving forward is what I've called repayment is essentially reimburse the town. Uh, when the, when the pandemic hit and funds began to, to roll out, there was a lot of emphasis on getting, um, greater access to the government. And so that's why we started streaming meetings. Um, that's part of the reason we started to go with the, the online permitting system. And then we added the Civic Rec software um, to do this for the same purpose of the permit software. And what that does will is allow people to uh, from the comfort of their home or work or office, wherever they are, they can, they, they will be able to, um, request reservations uh, and sign up for programs and things of that nature. So I'm suggesting that we, uh, well, I'm recommending that we take some of the ARPA funds and basically pay the town back for the money it spent on those, on those projects. And then on the, the right-hand side of the screen, I've got a list of new projects. And these are taken from the conversations I've had with, with the council, uh, with staff, with members of the public. And it's, it's just kind of getting all the ideas on paper. And the first one there, internet access and IT. That would be upgrades to our existing wireless networks and on, on the property. Um, but when the block, when the first lockdowns initially occurred, we extended wireless, um, internet capabilities down to the shelter uh, so that people could come and work or go to school or upload homework or what, whatever the case may be. Uh, we'd actually look to improve that by providing a direct connection. That's why it's point-to-point wireless right now. So we'd like to connect it with hardwires, which is more reliable and, and faster speeds. And then we have some IT upgrades that, that need to happen just in the normal course of business to server and, and things of that nature. Safety, and I've got a fire department there in parentheses. Um, we had spoken with Chief Livingston recently about the traffic signal that they're working with the state to install in front of the new station, which will, um, they'll have the ability to trigger when they get a call, which will stop traffic. Um, I talked to the chief about that and I'm including that as something I think we should consider funding. Um, would be, would be the cost of that traffic signal. Um, town hall expansion is not something we've talked a lot about, uh, but that was in the capital improvement plan last year, uh, to fund a space needs assessment. And we got some findings back from that in preliminary footprint, um, schematics of this, of this room, how it can be expanded. Initially, that, that conversation started around, again, going back to the pandemic when we were social distancing, revealing that about three people from the public in here with council and even limited staff. Um, so this would solve, we'll sort of offer two things. One, it would just provide a bigger space. Um, it would give us the opportunity to get the, the new audio visual, uh, hardware in its own space. Um, and it would provide additional space for programming. Now that we have a programmer on staff. This is really our, our only indoor venue at this point. So expanding this room so it could be divided, um, into, into separate spaces, much like you'd see in a larger library. And then, um, it would also provide a permanent home for council seating, um, so that we're not uh, we're not rearranging tables every, every time there's a different event in here. And that, that area could be blocked off. Uh, so that's what that item is. Property acquisition, uh, we haven't, uh, moved forward yet with any of that. Uh, but we could fund, uh, any pending or upcoming property acquisition that we, that the town likes to pursue. Transportation, uh, is going back to the roads discussion that we had. I think it was the last meeting about some of the shoulder work. Um, I reached out to the state and we're working on setting up a meeting to talk about how the town might be able to partner with them, um, to, to make road improvements, shoulder improvements, whatever the case may be. Uh, Merlek is one that this board has talked about, which is why I included it in here, which is the Mills River Life and Richmond Center. Uh, and then land preservation has been a big topic, uh, that we've talked a lot about and that would be using a, uh, a portion of these funds, basically a seed money sort of program that could be used for land preservation, land conservation, um, purchase development rights, things of those, of that nature. Uh, so that's what we have kind of now, just putting everything out there that likely we could think of. And I'm happy to take any other, uh, questions or if there's a specific project in mind that council has, I'd be happy to hear that. Uh, we have had a few of the surveys completed. Um, Merlek is a very, has been a very popular response on their support of that. Uh, support of senior programs, youth programs. I can't think of any of the highlights at the moment. But again, that's going to be open for two more weeks and we'll see, we'll, we'll see what we get. And then just moving forward again, oh, excuse me, I forgot that I had this slide. So I've kind of grouped these into, into what I'm calling a general category. One is government services and that is uh, access, which would be the, the ability to do upgrades to the streaming capabilities, technology. The usability of, uh, the town's website, um, with the uh, new recreation software as well as the permitting software. Uh, nonprofits has been something that we've talked about. So I just have that as a general category now for a specific group. Recreation has been another popular topic, uh, from the survey. And then of course the preservation, conservation, and I left that broad, but that could be a couple of different, a couple of different, uh, projects. Uh, so moving forward, again, we have the public input sessions next week. We're asking folks to complete the survey by the end of the month. And then we'll present those to you, uh, as your first meeting in November, I believe. And then, um, soon thereafter, talk about any formal decisions that this board wants to make about how to utilize these funds. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And, uh, continue the conversation.
Now, on that November ten council meeting, would you attempt to hang any sort of figures on some of these things that you listed that have just sort of organically come up on the list of possibilities?
For the November tenth meeting? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I didn't know. Things like the IT and expansion and some of those things that, you know, just to give us some idea, we're talking six figures or seven figures or, you know, what kind of?
Yeah, I did not include them on this presentation. Um, but I can, I can just tell you from what we've, what we've spent so far, like on the audio upgrades, that original contract was for about ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, the Civic Rec software. You know, I say ten thousand, I can't remember exactly. Smart Gov is around this, around the same thing. The internet access, I don't have any prices for that, but our IT folks are working on getting us some quotes for that. The, the signal for the fire department, uh, is estimated to be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this point. Uh, town hall expansion, I don't think we have a figure for that. Uh, we have property acquisition pending right now, so we know that figure. Um, and don't have any figures for transportation, Merlek. Um, and no hard numbers for land preservation, but we can, we can come up with, with the recommendation for it. So the majority of them, we do have, I think reasonable figures for. Uh, but there's still going to be a couple of loose ends that we'll need, we'll need to figure out depending upon how councils proceed.
Now, is the life enrichment, is that seeking capital investment into purchase of something, or is that more operational or is that just a placeholder?
Is this a placeholder? Cause it, it, because they've come to this, these meetings and spoken during public input. And, um, Sandra has suggested that we look at some sort of commitment like we did with the farm market.
Hmm.
Um, so we've not discussed specific projects. Um, I just put it on there because it's been kind of a recurring theme that we've seen in, in public meetings.
So. Oh, I was just gonna say, so the repayment uh, of these funds that we've already spent out of general fund. You know, Daniel, I'm, I'm a little bit leery of doing it that way because I would like to see us use the ARPA money for projects that people are going to see
Right.
for years and years down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, certainly. And, you know, the town paid for that stuff and was really no no burden upon the town to pay for it. So I mean, it, we got what we paid for.
Right.
We needed to upgrade because we were streaming. And that's here to stay. I realize that. Uh, I've, I'm just a little bit shy about paying the town back for money we've already spent.
Sure.
And we easily spent that money, so.
I know me and the poll stepped down to look at adding on, possibly adding on to the maintenance building.
Mm-hmm.
So we need to try to factor that in somewhere if we can, uh, that's much needed space. Acquire any other property, put anything on. We might have a way down there with that on the back of that. I'm just going to throw this out there for y'all to think about. You know, we've been down this road before. And I'm not shy about asking, I like the general public, aren't enough? Where is everybody at with the sheriff's contract? Are we just gonna, are we okay with just keeping going as we, as we are? Cause he's gonna start on budget as soon as we get past the first year, he's gonna need to know. We need to, or do we need to take some of this money and do something with it? Um, you know, I'm sure all parties need to know. So citizens of Mills River, our staff and the sheriff's department, all parties need to know. If we're okay with keeping it, then we're okay with keeping it. But if we're thinking about doing something else, got a little bit of money here possibly to get the ball rolling. If not, then we just, we know, and we might get plug in there some. I don't know. Just ask. I don't see how that, me personally, I don't really see how the town in Mills River could order on the park. But I just think we need to be talking to all our citizens and see the what level of service they're expecting from us with the sheriff's department.
I think it would be good to get public input on that. Um, did the sheriff's contract cost go up or stay the same?
It, it's went up every year.
Yeah, it went up.
How much is it now?
I don't have the figures. I've got my head, I'm sure Daniel probably does.
Nine hundred and fourteen thousand.
And that's close to what it had been then, isn't it?
No, they had deleted that figure from my brain. I don't know.
So it's come down?
No, it went up that much.
It went up how much?
But we just, you know, we just, I just think, you know, if y'all are around the citizens of Mills River during, especially during this public input, it's not don't be bashful, we need to ask.
Right.
See if they're, if they like what we got, expect more or could do with less. That's where I think we need to be.
Well, what we might need to do is let them know how much we're paying now and see what they think. You know, is it worth trying to go out on our own or do we stay where we're at?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the go out on your own numbers would be astronomical, I would think. You know, back when we looked at it years ago, it was one bit, bought us some of my money.
Well, I'm very happy with Henry's County Sheriff's Department. I think they do a fine job. And you said it was almost at a hundred thousand or it went up a hundred thousand?
Went up.
Went up.
It went up a hundred thousand on top of what we was already paying?
Close to it.
Okay. Well, I think the public needs to know the figures, so we need to get those for them.
And the figure again, Daniel, is how much per year?
Nine hundred and fourteen.
It's nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars is what we paid them. The county or sheriff's department.
Okay, for now. Okay.
Which equals about the checks over there, seventy six thousand dollars.
Six thousand one sixty-seven.
Per month.
Well, and for that, we get four deputies.
It's right at six, correct?
Six deputies. Equipment, cars and first priority at cause.
Yeah, yeah.
But when, correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, whenever you talked to the sheriff and the manager, they were giving us an option without losing service. Right.
Uh, they give us the option and Daniel was with me, correct me if I'm wrong. They said they would work with us in any way.
Mm-hmm.
They said that it was basically the ball was in our court just to let them know that they had, uh, one year. They had, we had to be notified one year ahead.
That's right.
In the contract. So whatever we're talking about now doesn't even really affect twenty twenty-three. It'd be affecting twenty-four. That's the budget. I mean, that's the the contract negotiations would be yearly a little bit, but, uh, and they're basically doing three years, correct? The three-year contracts with price increases?
No, that, that was in the original contract. So there was a phase in period where we paid a third, we paid two thirds, not pay the full cost.
No.
But that, that has long since gone. So it's full cost, not moving forward each year.
And did you, did you start the clock ticking on the years' notice this past June?
We gave them notice that we, we are going to renew it next year.
For twenty twenty-three?
That's right.
And for, okay.
Yes.
We'd like to say whatever, if we elect to say anything at all, it would happen July first, twenty twenty-four. But I just think it would be good to, in all these discussions about these ARPA funds and all, would be a great time to discuss, you know, where they think our service is with them. You know, they might be thinking they need more. I don't know. I just, the only way we're going to know is to talk to the citizens of the Mill River and see what they, what they expect from us.
Right.
You know, for that, right now, that's one of our lines of service.
Well, I think getting input would be the proper thing to do.
So do you think, Shannon, that since you, you talked to them, do you think that, that they would be open to the ideal maybe the town, keep, keeping a nine-to-five deputy and uh, maybe prioritize on the investigations and things like that? Would that be an option?
They would set a number to that.
Yeah, of course.
But they would also tell us that our service would be hindered what you would see now by having somebody out here in this township, at least one in this township, twenty-four seven. Pretty much the way I took it.
Mm-hmm.
They would work with us anyway, whatever, uh, demographics we come up with and scenarios, they would put a number to it for us. But it's hard for the five of us and staff to develop what that needs to be. You know, we might have it perfect right now. I don't know. But I just know that the citizens of the Mill River need to know that we're paying right out of a million bucks. And is that enough? Or is it too much? Or are they happy with it or what? I don't know. I know when I'm in store, people say, you know, what's that sheriff's contract cost? I tell them, they like. But everybody, everything's high, you know? Find that, find that where everybody's at with it.
And I'll add too, that I think we'll be having some serious discussions this spring with regards to revaluation and we may be looking at our tax rate and, uh, part of that planning and discussion will involve looking forward about, are we going to move forward with year to year with the sheriff? With ten, fifteen percent increases annually or or something different, a modified contract or chopping it as a service altogether and picking up another service, but uh, I think gathering public input now is a good time as any, but I think we're really going to have to make a hard decision come early twenty twenty-three when we're looking at tax rates.
Yeah, because basically when we mentioned this before, and I know we have a workshop, but we take what the sheriff's department takes out of our tax rate and what the sheriff, I mean, the fire department takes, we, we basically got this. We we basically got just a little bit left, and we're making it off of sales tax and just a little bit ABC money still on. I don't know if there's anything else much we're growing from, are there? The CDs are starting to go back up a little bit. That used to be a big ticket item, but not so much in the previous year.
We only have two CDs right now. They're pretty small as far as interest rate, but capital management trust is where the majority of your money is, and it's paying at the end of September, two point eight five percent. So we are well over budget this year. And then if I could just you started all of this discussion with the idea that maybe you could take some of the ARPA money. I'm just going to throw out there that you do have an assigned fund balance of over three hundred thousand for future possibility of doing this, you could assign more fund balance towards it. Basically, take some of your upper money, put it in savings to go right to police department. If if for if and when that becomes a reality.
Any more discussion about the ARPA funding? Move on, I guess. All right, we'll move staff updates.
I don't have a lot. Your volunteer dinner reminder is six thirty on Tuesday, the eighteenth, that's next Tuesday, at the barn.
At Tall Oaks.
At Tall Oaks. Except to thank Patty Brown for all of the planning on this this year. She's she has worked tirelessly to organize it.
All right, tax collection, Arlie?
So far, at the end of September, your year to date collected is almost six hundred thousand dollars. It's about twenty percent. Running a little bit behind last year. We've caught up some. I think we're more like twenty five percent as of today. So we've got two point three million dollars more to bring in. Working on it. You're welcome.
Just real quick, a reminder for everybody, our mobile food market's now twice a month, so our next one will be next Tuesday, the eighteenth, and that's from two to three P M. At the picnic shelter. Also, we will have our movie in the park also next week, the twenty Friday, the twenty first. We have some activities starting at six P M., and then the movie will start right around seven as soon as it gets dark enough. And then everybody just needs to save the date for Saturday, December tenth, because Santa's coming. Exciting things coming up.
So what's our policy on the baseball field? My job in a day, do they schedule the baseball field for practices and such and games and so?
They can, so it's available. It's kind of like our picnic shelter. It's available first come, first served unless it's reserved. So we do have ten dollars an hour for practice and thirty dollars an hour for games. So essentially, if they would like it lined, they'd have to pay that thirty dollars an hour. They can just contact me. And I will let them know if it's available and we'll get it arranged.
Couple of quick updates. We had a new minor subdivision application this week for eight lots on Old Haywood Road towards the county line, so the northern end of our jurisdiction. It's a preserve type subdivision, so there's about four and a half acres of land that are going to be preserved, wetlands and lowland forests as part of that. So that's something staff's going to be reviewing coming up. I received an email from one of the engineers with the Legacy Continuing Care Retirement Community Project on Jeffers Road that they are in the midst of developing full construction plans. I think I'd given an update earlier in the year that we should expect plans to be submitted in the fall with the hopes that they would break ground probably towards the end of the year. So just a heads up that that's probably coming down the pipe as well. And then just wanted to put it out there that we readvertised the planning technician position last Monday, reaching out to universities to try and attract recent and upcoming graduates as well. It's just been a really tough labor market, especially with entry level planning jobs specifically. There's a lot of them open right now, and with COVID, people have moved up in other positions, so trying to be competitive, but just throwing that out there again, that we're hiring for that position and accepting applications until the end of the month currently. That's all I have.
Uh, just a quick reminder to Jeff's point, the reappraisal going on this year. There will be a community reappraisal meeting in this room on December the first at six thirty. Is that right? Do you remember? Six o'clock. And that's will be an opportunity for the folks in the tax office of the county to come and answer questions of anyone who comes here. So just a reminder that that's coming up, and if anyone has any questions about that, that's a great opportunity to come and 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 get some answers. That's all I have.
Um, I wanted to say something on the minutes. Is it appropriate now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, I was wanting to revisit the vote because I was a little confused by that.
Which one are we talking about?
It was for the minutes. Let me find it on here. It said, um,
Tell us where you're at.
For the LED signs. It said, um, when it was voting to send it back to the planning board. It's had me as voting as nay, and I voted for yes to send it to the planning board, I thought. The first, it was both votes that I was confused on. It said, the motion failed by a vote of three nays with council member Austin Cantrell and Mayor Gantz voting in opposition and council member Good and Young voting in favor of. Am I just reading that wrong?
No, there was an there was an original motion that failed. And then another motion was made. The second motion is the one I had you down is voting against, which was that you were voting to not send it to the planning board. I'm happy to double check the tape.
That's my my recollection as well.
All right, so that's three step.
Well, just recheck it because I wasn't sure. I was confused by the time I read all that. I thought, I don't understand.
I'll I'll double check it, and I will let you know. In the meantime, they've been approved. If it's wrong, it will come back to council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments?
Mayor Gantz, I'd need to let you know that I will be out of town on twenty seventh, and then I will make our next meeting.
Staff make a record of that, so we're not waiting on him. Thank you for letting us know. Anything else? Anybody, anything else before we?